Meeting an executive session where we took up union and non-union personnel matters. Some votes were taken, but because they're related to personnel, we won't be announcing those tonight. With that, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement?
Can you, we're less than six feet.
Yes, you can.
You want me to be that person?
What's that?
They have to.
Oh, we are under a mask mandate. Because we cannot be six feet apart tonight, we do have to wear our masks. When you step up to the podium, if you're going to speak, you can pull your mask down to speak.
Thank you. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Tonight I want to share something, myself and I know selectmen Anderson and Ballantyne were both there, and I'm reading this from the fire chief because he and I both had the honor of attending an event this past weekend. "A great day as we dedicated the Route 137 Bridge over Route 6 in the name of those who have suffered and are suffering from the hidden wounds of PTSD/TVI emotional illness, the first of 50 in the United States. This milestone is the result of hard work by John Dixon's eighth-grade civics class and the Bridges for the Fallen organization run by Rob Maydor. Speakers from across the United States shared the stories of their lost loved ones in an effort to erase the stigma associated with suicide and these hidden wounds." This was by far one of the proudest and honoring moments as the Executive Director of the Chamber that I had. It was, I'm sure Larry and Mary will talk about it later, but please, when you go over this bridge, just reflect on people that you may know and just ask somebody if you can just help them out, because it was just, and these kids, the eighth-grade students that are now sophomores, and what they did to bring this, to help others that they don't even know, was phenomenal. So, if you ever do go to the high school and hear about these students, just reach out, say thank you, because they did, and they made us all very, very proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Larry?
Yeah, let me emphasize what Cindy said and Captain, our fire chief. Mary and I were there, it was extremely moving, through the series of mothers and fathers who had lost one from something that's not obvious, not physical wounds, it's metal wounds that we tend to ignore. And it started at one o'clock, went over three hours of one story after the other, of extremely moving, and our hats off to the Montmorey students who put this together, John Dixon, their teacher, Cindy helped out, Rob Maydor played a key role, as did our fire chief. And I think we all reflect on that, you know, you don't want to get personal discussion like this. But I have a very good friend whose son went through this exactly one year ago, where he was, in the end, succumbed to abuse, but after two terms of the bond, couldn't take it any longer. And it's so distressing, his parents did everything they could to reach out, couldn't make it happen. So, this remembering, going over the bridge, we just have to keep this in our minds, so hats off to that. It was, it was actually a tough afternoon, just listening to it, because it was, you can't ignore it when you have those people like that telling their personal stories in a very heartfelt manner. And I know, Mary, you have some thoughts on maybe a proclamation and stuff as well.
Mary?
Yes, we, Larry said it best, it was wonderful, but it was also very difficult to listen, being the mother of a son, and he's now 42, but hearing these moms talk about, and a father, their children who died in their late teens, early twenties, due to hidden, it was unbelievable. So, yes, I'm not big on how you do a proclamation, but we talked about having a proclamation for the civics class at the high school from the Board of Selectmen. I would also like it noted that I was not surprised, one of the last people that was thanked, the last two people that were thanked, were our very own Madam Executive Director, Cindy Williams, who is outstanding at everything she does, and Chief LeBlanc, who seems to have his finger in everything. So, I was not surprised to have the two of them recognized at this event.
Thank you, Mary. That's the wish of the Board to do a proclamation for the eighth grade?
Please.
Joe will work on that. Joe noted, thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Good evening, Emily Mitchell, Council on Aging Director. Just a really brief announcement to the Board and to the public. For anyone who has SNAP benefits, also known as food stamps, if they lost food associated with the storm last week and the power outages, very likely they're eligible to have those benefits replenished and so that they can replace that food. It's a pretty simple, one-page form, it can be submitted by mail, fax, or using a phone app. We have copies of that form at the Council on Aging, and our staff would be very happy to assist folks in completing and submitting those forms. They do have to be submitted within 10 days of when the food was lost, so there is a timestamp on this, on this assistance, but it's very simple, and we're there to help, so just stop by any time that we're open. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we vote to approve three items in the consent agenda. First is a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. The second is a similar Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. And the third is a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $965.94.
Moved in second at any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, Joe? Next up is the, under old business, Local Initiative Program, LIP, for Chloe's Path Affordable Housing. No votes will be taken. Take this time to tell everybody the format of tonight. I'm going to let the public speak first. Once the public has spoken, I'm going to shut it off to the public, we're not going to get in a debate with the applicant or the Board after that. After the public has spoken, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Singer to respond to anyone in the public that he, or any responses he wishes to have, and then I'm going to turn it over to the Board for the Board's comments and concerns to the applicant, at which point Attorney Singer and the applicants will have a right to speak to us, and then I'm going to end it. I would ask that you hold your comments for new comments. This Board has over a 200-page packet tonight. We are in receipt of all of your emails, and as we get them, we add them to the packet, so there's some new ones today that haven't been added to the packet. But this Board has studied this a lot, we've heard it a lot, we don't need to hear the same thing again and again. We have retained it, we are listening, which is why we've had so many meetings on us. Like I said, the Board will get into their comments and concerns to the applicant, and then I will ask the applicant to be back on the 15th with any changes that they're willing to make to the LIP application. This is a LIP, a Local Initiative Program application. They don't need to do this. They're taking a shot at it with the Board, and they're going to hear our comments. They can go right to the state for what's called an unfriendly 40B, which if the Board doesn't support it, and they don't support some of our asks, I'm sure that, I'm sure that that's what they're going to do. So, keeping it, keeping the spirit of not having a lengthy meeting tonight with the same information, please only speak about new information, and I will limit the amount of time I let people speak. So, if we're going to get into lengthy comments, you should tell me ahead of time when you stand up at the podium, I'll hear what the subject is, and I'll decide whether or not I'm going to allow it to be read in or not. With that, Attorney Singer, would you like to join us at the table, or do you want to stay back there for the first part of this?
We're happy to stay here.
Thank you. So, anyone in the public wish to speak on this with any new information?
Thanks, I'll be.
And Pete, you can pull the mask down if you want to, to speak.
Thank, and I will do my best to be succinct, it's not, activity is not my thing, but I promise I've, I've put these notes together to do just that. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you again for allowing us to come before you again to ask some hopefully new questions, some questions I think may have been raised at the police station meeting, but none of you were there, so I will do my best. But first, you know, again, just a general question, what are we doing here, really? I think my neighbors, and I believe and we appreciate that you are taking the time, but this is about the direction of our town.
Excuse me, you need to identify yourself.
Forgive me, sorry, my name's Peter Gori, 226 Sisson Road. Thank you. Our neighbors believe this is about the town's direction and I-
One second, Pete.
Can you just, can you just spell your name for the record?
Sure. G-O-R-I.
Thank you.
Forgive me, I'm going maybe too fast. So, I, thank you. We believe it's about an eye towards truly appropriately scaled development in the town and in our neighborhood specifically, and the town's character and its future. We still believe that this is grossly oversized, and I'll ask some questions about why we believe that. As I said before, this is also not about affordable housing, we feel strongly that this is a maneuver to get 75-plus, approximately 75 luxury apartments in our small town. We believe in what we've heard the last couple of hearings and through a conversation that I had with Mr. Bush, and I don't see him here today, but this is a luxury residential project, this is not workforce housing. What's being proposed with an amenity package and onsite leasing is luxury residential projects on Cape Cod, in our opinion, and that of the market. I do this for a living, I'm quite certain that that's what it is. When people talk about amenity packages and rental buildings and onsite leasing, they might as well say that they're leasing onsite so they can fill it, stabilize it, and sell it. That is the aim typically of these types of projects. That is, I hope, new information, and I'd urge and ask the development team to answer that question and some specifics that I have in a moment after that. So, furthermore, I think for the Board, and I think people have talked about scaling it down, maybe adding additional affordability, the problem with that for us is, we're talking about a project that's so big that even if it was half affordable, it's still 50 units. If 50 market rate units were proposed to any Board in this town, we feel pretty strongly they'd be laughed out of the room. It's too large for this site, specifically to what they're getting on the market side. And again, we're punctuating that because this is not an affordable project. The next thing I want to talk to you a little bit, and forgive me, but this is near and dear to my heart, because I just bought my home, but I grew up here. There's a, there's a property value issue here, and before we get into anyone thinking that, that we're concerned about affordability, about who might live in this building, we're not. We're all mostly liberals, we would love to have workers and our neighbors and people I grew up with living in this project, but that's not what we're talking about. I've had two brokers and two developers look at a house right next to mine, and they won't even consider it because of Chloe's Path. So, there is an issue, there's going to be a market condition issue along our properties and around our properties, we believe on Forest, South, and elsewhere, because people are worried about things like traffic and impacts that have not been addressed. So, again, we can't really talk about it without getting into all these details. Moving on, forgive me, I, what I want to say before I get into the detailed questions is this is your opportunity to go on record against the project, not just not supporting it, but we feel strongly, and I've asked some of you privately, and I'll ask it, I'll say it quite bluntly tonight, we feel you should oppose this project at this scale, with the Commonwealth, with the DEP, with MISA, and with the other bodies, the Cape Cod Commission or others, who may, it may come before. So, to dig into the questions for Mr. Singer and the team, has the team decided not to answer any of the significant questions that were raised 105 days ago when we met at the police station? We haven't heard a single question answered that was raised that night. That's three and a half months ago. They've known what the questions are, they have not been answered. Has the developer committed to doing specifically a comprehensive traffic study, I've asked before, but specifically using real summer peak and school time drop-off and pickup data? If not, will you commit tonight, tonight, to doing such a study? Has not been answered. Will the project have to go to the Cape Cod Commission? I can send these to Andrew, too. Will the project have to go to the Commission? And if so, why or why not? And if not, will the town refer it to the Cape Cod Commission? If only for advisory, if not a more detailed review? Has the owner requested the removal or extinguishing of the deed restriction negotiated with the Commonwealth and endorsed by this town in 2015 and '16? Will they? And if so, when? Have the developers advanced any discussion of accelerating a sewer, sewer-ing of the, excuse me, sewer-ing of Sisson Road and its environments to try to limit the impacts on our neighborhood with maybe one five-year-long construction period instead of multiple multi-year construction periods? Another one, was HFH Development involuntarily dissolved by the Secretary of State's Corporation Division or by court order in June of 2019? Can you describe the lien held on the property by Mrs. Spear, Nancy Spear, of I believe, Orleans? For Mr. Bush and the Heritage Team, how many 40Bs have you developed regarding the Hudson Matrix project that's been spoken about here in this room? When did you build the project? When did you sell it? We know that you developed in '16, '17, 2016, 2017, and sold it in 2018 for $44.25 million. A project twice the size, three years. Do you know how many residential apartment buildings in Harwich have onsite leasing? I don't believe there are any. Do you know how many projects, how many buildings in town are taller than 53 feet? I can count less than 10, five of them are government buildings. To the Board, will you again urge the developer to only come back to this town with a project of 40 or fewer units? If you vote not to support the LIP, will you also go on record in opposition to anything larger than 40 units? And lastly, will you go on record with the Commonwealth, DEP, MISA, the Cape Cod Commission, and our state-elected officials to determine and state quite clearly that this is just too big for this environmentally sensitive site that the state and the town already deemed so? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Peter, will you send that to either staff or to me to distribute to the Board? Thank, thank you.
My name is Bill Kavaleski. I live at 138 Forest Street in Harwich, and let me just say, I'll never be able to top that speech. Thank, thank you, thank you, sir, for voicing the concerns of a lot of the people in the neighborhood. Thank you. From my understanding, the developer has been in some private talks or negotiations with certain butters or people in the neighborhood, and not all the people in the neighborhood have been involved or notified about this. So, I was wondering if the Board could do anything to include other people, such as myself and other concerned residents, about anything that the developer might be talking with other people in the neighborhood?
I would answer that, Brian Bush anyway, I did reach out to him, and I spoke to him, and I know that some of the people that you're speaking about reached out and spoke to him. He's been good about calling people back and setting up meetings. So, that would be on you. We can't make them have a public meeting, I guess that's the best way to say it, but I know he has been responsive, and I'm sure Attorney Singer would be responsive if you called his office and asked to set up a meeting with the team to discuss your concerns.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Needless to say, I'm against this development because of the size, where it's located, in and around wetlands, and I think it's much too big for, for the area, and it's not appropriate for the small residential community that we live in. It's one of the reasons I bought a place here many years ago, and I'm against this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judith Underwood, 220 Sisson, I'm in a butter, and I'm also Water and Wastewater Commissioner, and I am also a trustee on the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm going to make this very short.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Just, just to make it clear, you're not speaking on behalf of those organizations.
I am not speaking on behalf of those organizations, thank you, but I did want to disclose that I am a huge advocate of affordable housing. We just got our power back on, and our cable is still not connect, reconnected, and I have two trees in my front yard, so I've been working on a report, not that it'll ever be as eloquent as my neighbor Peter, but I just want to ask your permission to be able to send that to you. Comcast swears they'll be here by Thursday, and it's all on my old computer, and I can't get it onto my laptop. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, just quickly, the, the report will deal with the stabilization of the hill that was built back in 2016, and I, and a number of people are not confident that it was billed to the specs of the engineer who presented to the planning board, and really made everybody in the audience comfortable with the design. This was back in 2016, I believe, and unfortunately, the recordings for those meetings didn't start until six months later, so we just have the notes, the minutes from that meeting. And unfortunately, the next day, he was removed from the project. So, he was not involved with the actual fill that went on, on that hill, and I'm a little nervous about that, and I'll send you that in the packet, and also particularly about the traffic on the street. This project has come before different Boards, not this particular project, but developing that location, has come before the Board over different time periods. There's been opportunity to traffic studies, they haven't done that, and I'd also like to know, just because my property is directly, and where that road starts at the beginning of Chloe's Path, so everything coming out of there, they'd really have to take a right turn, it's not safe to take a left turn, even in the winter, I think you just, you don't have the sightline. And I want to know if there's been any discussion with the police and fire station to see about, maybe that's where they exit out of, if that has been approached with the town, for any size project that may or may not go in there, so that there's, there's two egresses. And as it is now, for the drop-off and the pickup for the elementary school, the cars line up down Sisson Road, so as it is, that's a single-lane road for, twice a day, for half an hour, an hour. It's just, it's dangerous. It's dangerous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll get you the long, lengthy email, I'm sure you'll love it.
This is, this is coming back on the 15th, so it asks if you could get that to us by the end of this week.
If Comcast comes through, I will, too.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
Thank you. Clara McClarty, Pleasant Bay Road, East Harwich. I don't live right next to this project, but I am really concerned about the trajectory in town with development, and just wanted to say, I have written to you a long time ago about this, but I don't know if the email is specifically linked to this project. In, I've been seeing in the press, the picture painted, you know, they use the term NIMBY, not in my backyard, is a way to deride people who live next door to a proposed project and oppose it. And it sort of implies that those people are self-interested and can't see the greater good because they're just worried about their property values or their view, or something like that. And I just want to encourage the Board to think of yourselves as representatives for the community, you know, the people who elected you, the people who don't have a big financial influence, but, you know, this community is obviously under pressure, and I think anyone who has any sincere interest in our community is worried about affordability issues and worried about environmental issues. And the storyline that we're being fed, this overwhelming story, is that if we just were more open to these projects, if we weren't NIMBYs, you know, it would take care of the problems. And I'm so, I'm really skeptical about the storyline. I see it feeding into the interests of the people who have big financial profits to make. I see this, this story as, you know, another way of manipulating our instinctive knowledge about what our community needs and what's healthy and beneficial for the majority of us versus what benefits a few people and lines their pockets. And rather than looking at, you know, some kind of petty good guy, bad guy thing, the great Wendell Berry has suggested that we could frame this as, every person is capable of acts that are nurturing and acts that are exploitive. We all are capable of that, and we're all guilty of the exploiting at times and in some ways, but as a Board, if you try to evaluate this project on the side of the community, on the side of the town, and ask, you know, what is nurturing our community versus exploiting? And I think to say, to not support, to oppose this project is to side with the people of Harwich, the community of Harwich, which is a place that has a rural character, and it's a place that has a distinct population with certain interests, certain history. It's not, we don't just need workers, like workers are just some, some amoeba mass of people that can just be plugged into jobs that, you know, benefit someone. We have a community of individuals, we have a character, a personality, a history, and if, if, I could just encourage you to frame it that way, and to think of yourselves as there for the community, and, you know, the profit motive is not illegal, it's totally legal, the profit motive is everywhere, we're seeing in our society the way it's working out, and, and we don't mean to demonize it, but as the defenders of the community, you know, look beyond that. Thank you.
Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. I would just like to ask maybe two questions. One is the issue of the height, do we have the equipment to service this building properly? And if, and if we do, could it possibly be the new quin, or did we already have the capability? I'm curious about that. And the other question is, I was wondering if Dan Pelletier or someone could answer, what is the nitrogen load that this project will add to the Sacquetucket Harbor watershed? And in terms of dollars, what kind of cost in nitrogen terms would that be? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll answer the, the first on the fire, the ability to service the building, I spoke to the fire chief, and absolutely, depending on how they lay out the driveway around the building. So, as long as they can get close to the building, they can get on the roof with the new quin. Dan Pelletier is in the audience. Dan, I would ask for a brief, at this time, answer to Sandy's question with no debate afterwards.
Yeah, just for, to determine the actual nitrogen load, I'd have to work with the developer to determine the actual water use that's projected for the building, and look at the, you know, evaluate the treatment, wastewater treatment facility they're proposing to put in, to then determine what that load would be.
Thank you. Brief.
Could this building be serviced prior to the new quin?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ladder truck that we had in the past actually would go longer, further than the quin, than the quin would go. Anyone else in the public? Okay, with that, I'm shutting it off to the public, so there will be no rebuttal after the Board speaks whatsoever. Andrew, do you want to respond? Attorney Singer, I apologize, do you want to respond to anything that's been said, or do you want to do that as part of coming back in two weeks with whatever you're going to come back with?
Principally, I think, for the record, Andrew Singer, attorney of Dennisport. Principally, I appreciate getting the questions from everyone and what we're going to hear from you, so we'll mostly respond in two weeks. I did just want to know a couple issues, just so the Board knows. As far as the Cape Cod Commission, Cape Cod 40Bs are exempt from the Cape Cod Commission process. They do comment on 40Bs, so typically, once a project has been applied to the Cape Cod Commission, I'm sorry, to the Board of Appeals, Cape Cod Commission will send a multi-page letter generally reviewing the project. Also, just as far as some of the studies, we did submit a preliminary research from VHB on the traffic study, and we did commit at the last meeting, and we're going to be doing a full traffic study with seasonal adjustments, and as done, VHB is very experienced in that, as part of the process, and we are also proposing to comply, as we've said before, with all of the requirements, whether wastewater, MISA, traffic, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Compelled to just answer one other question, just to take it off the table. Peter Gori and I spoke this week, and he posed the question about the Hudson project. I did call Brian Bush as a follow-up on the Hudson project. They did build it, and they did sell it. He had a different partner in that project, and they had a different financing mechanism, and after it was done, somebody wanted out. He told me that his intention is not to sell this project, so I would just put that answer on the table now. And then the rest of the answers, Peter, whatever we can get you through the week, we'll get you through the week, and then I would imagine when- Uh, and then I would imagine when they come back, they'll come back with answers to all of it. I'm going to start with the town administrator and just ask Joe if you have anything to add at this time, or, or?
Uh, nothing further at this time, Mr. Singer.
Okay. Um, I will start with, um, comments, questions, and asks from the board, and I will start with Larry.
Thanks, Michael. This is a, uh, discussion, since we, you know, we need 40B. We recognize the, uh, the size limitations and so on. So, uh, as we, uh, as we've talked in the past, I think, and as I think, uh, Mr. Singer mentioned, and as the process goes forward with the, uh, we have, do have the ability to negotiate conditions. And so we can make, make requests and see where the negotiations go. I, I have one general comment on the, uh, on the size. It occurs to me that, uh, the, now there's 96 units, uh, 24 of them affordable, and we have a concern about the height. Uh, one, uh, one advantage of this project versus our, uh, normal affordable housing, even though it's 24 units, is all done by private developers. And so, uh, to the point I think was made, uh, these, uh, developers still have to make a profit. When looking at it, I wonder what happens if we take off the third story? That brings it down to 62 units. Is there any way is that still profitable? Uh, because that would also lower the height and make it, uh, still larger than, I think someone mentioned 40 units, but it does lower the height. And, uh, so that'd be one of the requests I make is, I would ask is that we consider that type of approach? Is that still feasible in terms of the developer? In addition to that, uh, some of the points I would like to follow up from listening to the discussions is, uh, we've talked about the traffic. We certainly would like to have conditions in there that address the, uh, the pedestrian traffic and the car traffic. We're mentioning tonight, there's a problem with making left-hand turns out of that. I think Judith, you mentioned that. Uh, we need to, uh, worry about that. We also, it occurs to us, occurs to me, at least need more three-bedroom units. In a proportional way, if we actually were to take off the third unit, that, that increases in percentage-wise at least, number of three-bedroom units versus, uh, one-bedroom units. I think as mentioned in the past, that we should re, uh, request, uh, limit to year-round rental, which certainly I would agree to. Prohibit conversion to condo at a later date. You bring up an interesting, uh, point tonight, I think, Peter, you raised this, that, um, and Michael tried to answer part of it. Is it possible for someone to build this and then sell it right away? So we do lose control. So, don't know how strict we can make that as a negotiation point, but a, uh, prohibit of condos later date. In the past, we've looked at other projects of having directional lighting to, uh, give the butters some relief. I would like to be that as consideration in this, going in our negotiations to make it, uh, directional lighting. Actually, not only for the butters, but we have in the past worried about people that enjoy the night skies in general in town, having limited, uh, limited lighting. Improved sidewalks, both to Harwich Center and, and the Shaws. It's a great location in terms of getting around Harwich, uh, walking. And I'd like a condition in there that, I think as we mentioned, our sidewalks, but they aren't, in many of our minds, very walkable sidewalks. So that would need to be improved. Open space is vital concern. I think if you read the documents from the, uh, National Heritage Act and so on, we'd want to have, uh, strict conditions on, uh, wildlife corridors and care of, uh, the box turtles. We should be looking at, uh, natural borders to, uh, prevent people from going into the open space. I know the, uh, National Heritage Foundation has suggested we have permanent monuments. As you know, from listening to a lot of discussions from conservation, uh, permanent is somewhat of a flexible term. Uh, natural borders are oftentimes preferred because they're natural. And you can still prevent pedestrian walking through into other people's backyards is a concern we had in one of our emails. I'd like to be, uh, make that, uh, a request. Especially as we look at, uh, traffic possibly walking through 4th Street. We're all looking at Sisson, but 4th Street's a big concern from a lot of our emails. And obviously, IAS systems need be, uh, I know, uh, Sandy and Claire, you've mentioned this, as, as we need to explore that and see what actually the impact that is in reducing nitrogen. I think that is some of the persons I'll start discussions with, Michael, and, uh, listen to the rest of the board members.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have, I have multiple questions, as I mentioned before. You know, part of our previous discussion was about the rents. Uh, I don't see these rents, these market rents, uh, as feasible, uh, for this area, and I, I don't see them as really, uh, the workforce housing or the affordable housing that we're, we're really looking for. I think they're lovely units. I think to the other person's point, they're much more luxury units. Um, and that concerns me, because as much as we need housing, and we certainly do, and we're in a crisis, we need housing for the people in the area who can afford it. And, you know, I would also comment to Larry's point about the massing, uh, and the, and the need to reduce the number of units, I feel. I also think that, uh, not only do we have, um, only a limited number of affordable units, which I'd like to see increased, um, but I also think it's important to figure out a way to qualify. And again, we all know that there's no true term for workforce housing, but that's another huge need. Uh, so those are a couple of my comments. I, I also know that there are various pieces of the application, um, that are standard, I'm sure. But, you know, one other element of this that I feel strongly about is that, to even talk about this further, I feel that there should be some sort of, um, shown, shown action that the restriction is being filed for to lift. Um, I think John Ideman made mention of that in one of his memos to the board as well. So, you know, I think you have to address, uh, the wildlife issue. I think we also have to acknowledge that, you know, certain things weren't done previously. And I also think that we have to talk about, uh, to the point of nitrogen, et cetera. We have, uh, in this application, a citing, like, that there's going to be sewer in the near future. To my knowledge, there's not any slight, slating for sewer in this area in the near future. And when I look at it, and this is just rough, rough numbers, but this is, uh, residential zoning, 40,000 square foot lots. And if you take the, I'm just going to say 10 acres, and you say 40,000 square feet per Board of Health regulations, 10,000, uh, square feet per bedroom, we're looking at, and forgive me, because this is a rough number, but we're probably looking at something around 42 bedrooms that would be allowed by a seven, you know, seven, uh, house subdivision. And now we're talking about something like 144 bedrooms, I believe. So, you know, here we are, spending all this money on sewer, and, and we're going to an area that isn't going to be sewed soon. So that's an issue for me as well. The other thing is that, you know, as I've already said, the rents are, I feel that the rents are, are high. You know, the application talks about the fact that there isn't really any transportation available. Yet the market analysis, that I definitely had an issue with last time we spoke, talks about using the expanded, uh, analysis in the area south of, you know, Plymouth's south of 44, saying that there are similarities. Well, part of that was transportation, and there isn't any. It's so, it, the market analysis I have a problem with, and that was helped to, to, uh, come up with the rent, the rental rates. The other thing I noticed, and I'm sure this is probably just a typo, um, but in the application, and it is on the, um, page two, let me just find it, I just plotted it down. I think it's page two of this, um, marketing and outreach plan? It talks about units, but it calls out, um, not Braintree.
Ha, there's an H down.
Yeah, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, that as well, I think, needs to, uh, to be looked at, because technically, uh, yeah, up to 17 of the, uh, homes will be available to people qualifying for local preference in Bellingham. So that's in the application. I think that's, uh, technically page six, uh, number six on page 15, I apologize. But in the same note, page two of the marketing outreach lottery plan talks about, you know, no public transport in the area. But like I said, the market analysis talks about transportation and using those other areas to compare the, the rental rates. So those two don't jive for me. Um, you know, another thing I noticed is the affordable and accessible units will be listed on the Mass Access website upon turnover. Um, so then there's discussion on, uh, giving local preference, but I understand that DHD, DHCD controls that local preference. But if any vacant units are being listed, and we even got that part on the road to have this development, how do we know that the local preference goes back to those people if it's being listed on this website? Those are just questions, sure you can't really answer all those tonight. But also just the number of parking, I would like to see, you know, if, if we're looking at reducing the numbers, as Larry said, you know, maybe you look for, uh, getting rid of the underground parking, grading so that you could have lower level units. But I just think the massing, I think the sewer issue is massive to me. And I think overall, one of the largest driving factors to me is also the rent. And one other thing, and I'll end on that, is, you know, I notice here that it says electric heat, but I also don't see anything about solar. And I know firsthand from nine years of renting units, that electric heat is exorbitant. And, you know, so much so that before we would rent those units, we would make it very clear to those tenants that they were going to have another couple hundred bucks a month on those, on their, uh, rent. So, and again, I know I mentioned this before, but there were, there was also discussion about, you know, fees, administrative fees, parking fees. All of these things are, would need to be fully described to me to better understand what those even regard. I'm not quite sure.
Thank you, Judith. Mary?
Um, I'd like to start just by thanking everyone who either spoke to us tonight or at one of the other meetings, or sent an email, or sent a letter. If you think we don't read that, we do. We read every word of that. And this in particular, because housing is so important to me, I've probably read them all three or four times, and I'm sure I speak for my brothers and sisters here. So we hear you and, and respect your opinions. I've been everywhere on this. I've been, this is definitely something we've need, I've been, this is crazy, we shouldn't touch it. And I'm, now I'm somewhere in the middle. I think, y- you can't let the perfect get in the ni, the way of the good. I don't know who the philosopher is that came up with that, and that's kind of where I see Chloe's path. There's a lot of good in it. Is it perfect? No, but there is a lot of good in it. As property owners, they are going to build something there. And, and we can either, we can be, no, we want nothing to do it, as one gentleman spoke, we can be vehemently opposed to it. We can do that. The negative of doing that is they will then build whatever they can get approved, and we've got no input to it. So I would like to find a way for us to work together and limit, make some limits or some, uh, requirements of the project. Some that I came up with, and obviously, we didn't talk, but, uh, I'm not against density. I don't think it's a four-letter word, and I've done a lot of, in addition to everybody who has written or called, I called probably 30 or so people, some of whom I think know a lot about housing, some of who probably know as much as I do, they live in a house. But I've called about 30 people that I respect their opinion and, and, and took these things out. So density to me was not a concern. If we were going to stick with the 96 units, I'd like to see a third or 32 of them be affordable. Affordability is what we need, and I agree with, uh, Selectman Kavanaugh that, uh, these are pretty luxurious when you start adding those amenity fees. I'll take Larry's sidewalks one step further. I'd like to see them ADA compliant from 28 up to Harwich Center. I wouldn't want to try to wa, I, I didn't walk it. I rode it and took a good look at it. I don't know how this is done, but I'd like all units to remain, uh, rental units in perpetuity. I'm sure lawyers know how to fit that into some kind of document. I would like them to be year-round residents, and I can argue with myself on this one. In some ways, if they were part-time residents, it would help with traffic, it would help with congestion, but it doesn't help with housing, and housing is our biggest problem. So I don't want to hear in five years that the place is empty, because everyone's here for 10 weeks in the summer. And I don't know how you control that, but I'm throwing it out there. I think sewers will end up on Sisson Road. It's a major connector from Harwich Center to 28. I can't believe that we won't be on Sisson Road, and probably earlier rather than later, because it is a connector. And I would like it documented that all costs of hooking up to the sewer belong to the developer and not the town. I'd like maximum occupancy numbers. I think perhaps, um, our Board of Health Director mentioned that, that, uh, we shouldn't be looking at squeezing a lot of people into these units. And I'd like the developer, or whoever the, to work with the neighbors on anything we can do to mitigate the problems they've described, particularly the light. The gentleman that spoke about the lights shining right into the master bedroom with his wife that has serious health issues. I'd really like some reach out to all of those neighbors to see what can be done to, to mitigate. And other than that, I'd like to be tall, thin, and blonde.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Can't wait to hear what Don. Don?
Actually, I'll end with what she ended with, and we're fine. Let me start out by saying that, uh, like Judith, I want to at least acknowledge that I'm a member of the, uh, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, I've been a member of, uh, the Harwich Economic Council for Housing for more than two decades. Um, currently, it's Vice President. Uh, I've been involved on the other side of the table of, uh, a number of LIPS. Uh, in, in my comings and goings through the years, I've probably been responsible for actually, uh, developing more than 100 units, uh, in Harwich. That being said, I'm not speaking on behalf of any of those organizations, but I'm informed by my, uh, by my experience with that. Uh, I'm going to ratchet this back a little bit further than my colleagues here. I guess the first thing is, I'm, I've, uh, I've been fond of saying through the years, but boy, does it apply here. Perpetuity is not as long as it used to be. Uh, I find in government that it's only as good as the turnover rate on, uh, the government that's, uh, trying to exercise authority over it. Perpetuity is, is an illusion. Uh, so if anybody thinks that they can, uh, hold true to this, and in a generation it's going to actually be exactly the same as it started, uh, I think you're fooling yourselves. There's a couple of things I'm unimpressed about, uh, with, with this, uh, request. One of them substantially is that I have not been involved, I'm sure there are off Cape, I've not been involved in a LIP that's essentially a bunch of watercolors, and we might be able to do this, and I'm going to cut and paste from other, uh, communities to, to create the illusion that there's a real project here. Underlying all of this is a self-inflicted wound on the part of whoever started, uh, whoever originally purchased this property and was inherited by the group that's in front of us right now. We didn't imply, we didn't infer onto that property, uh, conservation restriction. That was actually filed by the, the then owners of the property. It, I object to being some sort of hostages as a town that are going to be put in front of you to make the request. If this thing can go in front of the state and get the approvals, uh, that's why the hostile 40B doesn't impress me at all. If this thing is capable of doing, uh, the release of the covenant and getting the, those areas changed to be allocated differently, then go ahead and do it, and then come back to us and ask for a LIP. To, to actually ask for our LIP, which is essentially, we're enthusiastically in support of this, that's going to be used to try to get DEP to change their mind about the, uh, restriction that's been filed on the property already. We're not doing- already. We're not doing that to you here. You came into the room with that. And while you can do this, you can only do it in the manner that you're talking about if that's released and it's reallocated. So again, I don't even want to talk about voting for this until that covenant is released from the property itself. The other thing I'm unimpressed about is, I know that this is going to add up because it's a rental property. Add up to a significant increase in our affordable housing inventory percentage on paper. But I've said this through the years, and I continue to say it, the only credible way of measuring progress in affordable housing is getting a person in past the threshold of a unit that has a ceiling over them. To have, it's almost offensive to have the other units, the luxury units, count statistically for a state report as advancement in affordable housing, because it isn't. We're allowing that to occur as the cost of doing business to get the affordable units. But the density wouldn't have been allowed for this to be built as of right. The only way that this could possibly ever be built is by it being a forty-B. And then there's two prospects. You can either go with a hostile forty-B and have to ask DEP for a release of that covenant on the real estate, even though we don't agree to that. Or you get us to do a lip in the first place, and the lip is kind of the end around for this. So where I'm coming from right now is, I don't see this benefiting. And if it did, I'm with my colleagues here, I'd like to see no more than fifty units, and I'd still like to see about twenty to twenty-five of them being affordable if we can get that far. But right now, I'm still of the mind that, come back to me when you have a piece of paper that shows the DEP says they're releasing from the requirement that you imposed on your own property.
Well, I'm in the spirit of not repeating things that other people said. I do agree a lot with what my fellow board members have said. I'm going to start with the same thank you that Mary gave, and thank everybody for being involved. I've had very extensive conversations with some in the room and many out of the room. I would also compliment the developer. And whether we agree on this project or don't agree on this project, the Bush family and their history, they have high marks. If you do due diligence on them and research them, they're a quality builder and they're a good firm. So if we come to some agreement in Harwich, they would be a good partner, in my opinion. And they've shown in many of their projects the ability to bend and do things for the community. On the covenant, on the property, it says right in the covenant that it can be changed. And I said from the beginning that I'm not going to hold somebody hostage to change something to get to a no vote. So if we're going to be a no vote, we should be a no vote before we make people jump hoops to be a no vote. That's certainly my opinion and my opinion only. But why make them do a bunch of work, traffic studies and everything else if we're going to vote no? My major concerns of this project are size. And in my conversations, at least with Brian Bush, I said that right out of the gate. And I said it in the first meeting we had on this. The size, Harwich would be going from zero units to ninety-six units. We don't have any large forty-B projects in this town. And the first one we're being asked to support is ninety-six units. And I believe the gentleman sitting in the front row, the Realtor of the Year for the State, congratulations, said it best. Forty-B is what we have. It's not our law. And all of you in the room that are against forty-B should join and get ahold of the state senator from down Cape, that he's the one that quoted in the paper NIMBYism. He's the one that's supporting the forty-B projects. He's the one advocating for the benefits that you're all seeing, or lack of benefits, for local housing. And this board's made it very clear. We are pro-housing. We want housing. But we want it to benefit our community. So size is the most critical piece of this to me. And I don't see where the benefit of going zero to ninety-six units makes any sense for this community. Jay Coburn, and somebody helped me with the organization he works for.
CDP.
CDP stood up at, I think, our second or third with the rah-rah speech about the housing for the town of Harwich. Well, he'll benefit from that. And he said, compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Well, apples to apples is, we don't have ninety-six unit housing developments on this end of the Cape. And what's happening in Hyannis is irrelevant to me. And they do have transportation. Sewer. We really got to dive into sewer. I disagree that it's going to happen anytime soon. So the treatment plant that you have proposed, I did the same research that Sandy McClarty's done, and I don't believe it works. That water flows downhill into Grassy Pond, Grassy Pond into Coal Brook, Coal Brook into Sacotucket Harbor. And now that we're doing a multimillion-dollar project, natural attenuation project in Coal Brook, we really need to pay attention to this, because the taxpayers are already funding a portion of that. And that water is ultimately going to end up in Sacotucket Harbor. So sewer is a major concern. Affordability, the rental affordability. I, like Mary, have talked to a lot of people about this. I've talked mostly to residents of the town of Harwich, professional residents, firefighters, police officers, school teachers, people that work in the doctor's office, some doctors. I'm not coming up with the same affordability numbers that that study came up with. And I did ask Brian, in my meeting with Brian, to explain, or I believe it was in a meeting here, to explain Eastwood Company's market rate study versus theirs. And did my own research on that, and Brian did follow up on that. Even in their market research, they asked, I believe Heritage or Brian, or asked Eastwood Company, sorry, to extend the area. So they asked him, Julie, to look at Plymouth and to look at some of those other areas in the eastward. So their rates were lower, but there was a footnote in there that said, look outside of the area for actual market rate rents. So those are the things that are important to me. Density is number one, and it's very easy to find the densities that have been built in the surrounding communities. It's very easy to see how many residents are in those communities that are actual residents of that community. And my message to the applicant is, we really need to figure out how we're going to get more Harwich people and more of a benefit to Harwich, rather than hit this fake ten percent number on an antiquated law that shouldn't exist anymore. And with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Singer, if he has any follow-up comments. And I would ask that, because of the amount of information requested, as much as we can get way ahead of time, the better, so that we can start to process it. But I guess the real ask is for you to meet with the team and figure out, reading between everything that the public has said and the board has said, can we come to some sort of middle ground?
You're all set for tonight?
Okay.
Anything else? Joe, do you have anything?
No, just one editorial note. If the application goes forward, in your lip application on what's numbered page, excuse me, what's numbered as page eight, as much as I'd love to accept it, you have the numbers transposed. You show seventy-two affordable and twenty-four market.
We'll take that.
My job obliges me to know you have that error. That's all I have.
Thank you. Don, you're all set?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Larry?
Hi.
Great. I would just ask that, when you exit the room, could you go downstairs before the conversation starts? The noise comes back into the room, and then Jamie picks it all up. So we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us, so thank you all. Just going to give them a minute to exit. So new business, we have annual committee meetings, and we're going to start tonight with the Board of Assessors. Some of the committees are here. Others have called and said they weren't going to be able to make it. The reports are in the packet. We will be inviting them back. But there won't be a presenter for every committee tonight, but we will start with Board of Assessors. And before we do that, I would like to seriously congratulate you in your award.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate your acknowledging that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Richard Wastack on behalf of the Board of Assessors, Bruce Nightingale and Jay Kavanaugh. And I respect your comment. You have a lengthy agenda. I will keep it very, very brief. You do have quite a detailed report in your packets. We're at full capacity. We have three members appointed by you. We have all been duly sworn in. We have all met our ethics requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I would like to highlight just one thing. At an annual town meeting two years ago, the town endorsed us filing as a community legislation to allow those under the age of sixty to be given relief with their taxes under financial hardship or infirmity. That was filed in February of this year by Representative Peak and Senator Seer. We did provide testimony at a state house hearing in July. We've not heard the final result of that. If it is passed, we will be the first community in the Commonwealth to have such a tax credit to provide to the members of our community. So your Board of Assessors is trying to be proactive, to reach out to some of the difficulties that our taxpayers are facing, and trying to come up with programs. We have a tremendous number of programs for those who are seniors, sight-impaired veterans. We have nothing for those under the age of sixty. This legislation, as a local option, would allow us to do that. At this point, Mr. Chairman, that is the result of my final report. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Before we get on to questions, I would say, now that that group has left, we can all socially distance six feet or more. And if you want to move a little bit, adjust, and remove your mask, you are welcome to. I will be. Questions from the board, Larry?
None. Thank you, Richard, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Well-deserved award.
Julie?
I would reiterate the same comments. Thank you very much, and congrats. Well-deserved.
Thank you.
Mary?
Great report. Not surprised. You were always my favorite president of the board.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, Richard, in all sincerity. The Board of Assessors has always done a splendid job, so thank you for everything you guys do and continue to do.
Thank you.
Mine's not so easy. So, great report, thank you. And a theme that we've had lately is tax collection, and owner's unknown miscellaneous parcels, especially those. One example that I sent through administration this week, or before the weekend, and got some answers over the weekend, was related to, and I could go on and on, Richard. But one was related to a sand pit out in East Harwich, that a certain gentleman that does a lot of land clearing and buying fraction pieces of land and piecing them together. One is fairly enormous. And as I looked at the tax bill on that, I noticed the amount of acreage and then the amount of taxes being paid on that. And the amount of taxes being paid on that is about three thousand dollars. And that particular property was rented to R.H. White for their construction project. So the owner of that land is making money off of that land. There is rumor, and it's only rumor, but I think it's substantiated, that there will be a large solar field in our near future in that sand pit, which means private development. How, and I could list another one that just came up off Paul's path, and it's particular to the road that Eastwood Company just bought, and show tax bills for that, a very minute tax bill for that, so the residents are getting nothing until those lots are being sold and then reassessed. What can we do about this?
As you know, Mr. Chairman, our board, we have a fine line of what we do in terms of operations versus policy and regulatory. We can assess things based on, and you mentioned the solar, potential solar field. That becomes a business. That is a requirement of that then-business to send us a P and L to see. An assessment can be based on that. We have many of our commercial properties that do so, that we see actually their P and Ls. And it's assessed based on that, in that particular case. Property we look at is highest and best use. And if there are scattered parcels that are not yet put together as a subdivision, and you know as well as I do, we've seen it happen for many, many years. Scattered parcels, they're then put together as a subdivision. And then what has not been taxed on heavily over the years becomes a subdivision. It changes dramatically. We have a policy that was established ten years ago that, and Mr. Hall, I think you put it very well, as governments change and boards change, the then-Board of Selectmen endorsed that policy, that states to us, for any parcel to be added to the tax roll, to be taxed at its highest and best use, it has to have an engineered stamped plan accompanied by a deed that corresponds to that plan. It is then assessed at its highest and best use. We have numerous parcels. We've had this discussion privately and publicly many, many times, that are out there. And the developers don't do it. They will wait till the very, very last minute to put a subdivision package together, bring it out, then it gets assessed. That is the way it's been done for many years. The policy that we put together was reasonable, because many people were submitting a deed and having a plan drawn based on an approximate deed. But it didn't really match up to the plan. And then Assessor David Scannell had said, the only way that we can hold people accountable is to require a professional engineer to put their license on the line, to have them actually stamp a plan that corresponds to a deed. When deeds and plans come into the board, to the actually assessing department, is the professional staff that makes a determination, does in fact the deed match the plan. We had a case this year that you're all aware of that was similar to that. In those particular cases, we have held to that policy, a policy, again, that was endorsed by the Board of Selectmen going back ten years.
Based on the fact that it's not on the agenda, we won't debate it tonight. But look forward to an agenda item in the near future, because my research shows that Harwich is way behind other towns. And there's a lot more we can be doing, should be doing, and are not doing.
We're happy to listen to it, Mr. Chairman. As usual, we're a proactive board, and we're happy to do what's necessary. However, I need to remind you, you talked about the missions in your statement to committees this year. What is our mission? What is that of the professional staff? And we have to be careful of staying in our lane. And if we're to veer outside of that lane, give us the green light to do so. And in changing the mission, if you do so, that changes opportunities for boards.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We will go to real estate and open space.
Good evening. Elaine Shufflin, Chair of Real Estate and Open Space. It's going to be a reoccurring theme tonight. I will not go over the report I submitted. No point in taking up your time. I would just like to add that, for the first time, we have no vacancies on our board. We have a full committee. And our committee, right now, is very well-balanced. We have people who have experience and expertise in real estate, law regarding property acquisition. People also have experience with the Conservation Commission. So we're very well-balanced and with a lot of knowledgeable people. Our minutes are, our clerk, Carol Porter, does a great job with our minutes. They're done very nicely, and they're usually voted on at the next meeting, and she submits them promptly. We have been putting a lot of time into preparing recommendations regarding tax lien and owner's unknown properties. And after our meeting later this month, we will have some lists and suggestions and recommendations to turn over to this board. We've done a lot of research. We've gone over maps and assessed properties, what the value is, looked at properties that owe more taxes than what they're assessed at, and some properties that, and general areas, maybe that the board should be looking at, the town should be looking at, doing some work with. Again, we're, you know, the question is, what's the objective? Is the objective to take properties off the tax lien list? Is that to reduce that number? Or is it also to maybe end, acquire some properties that could then be sold, and the money used to acquire other properties? Those are the questions we have for you as far as just to defining exactly what we should be working on. But we will give you a report by the end of this month.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Questions from the board, Larry?
Not really, Elaine. Thank you for all the work you do.
You're welcome.
And the committee. I also wanted to be sure we thanked the town staff, because I know they worked very hard with you to give you all the information that you can review.
Yes, I have. We work very closely with the Water Department and Conservation.
We all work with Dan, so that's not fair.
And the Town Planner, John Ideman, Amy Sowsky of Conservation, and Affordable Housing Trust meetings I attended. Housing Trust meetings. I tend, try to attend when I can. So we work closely with other...
And I would just encourage you, continue, I like the diverse committee you have.
Yeah.
Encourage you to continue to balance open space with other, with real estate, housing.
Right.
Because over the past, in the past year, somehow just veered one side or the other.
Yeah, and we're aware of that.
You have to be real careful with that.
Yeah, and we are trying to be aware of the real estate part of our title, as opposed to just open space and conservation.
Thanks again.
Julie?
I would reiterate Larry's comments in the sense that, you know, the information that you're providing is incredibly helpful to the board, and vetting all this is reducing workloads on our end, so we appreciate all the work you're putting in. It's great to hear that you're working well with staff and that the committee's well-rounded, and it's great that you're fully staffed, so that's good.
Right.
So thank you for your time, too.
Mary?
Nothing to add. I think Larry and Julie said it well, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to add a little bit to what was said. I know you've been frustrated in the past about the progress of getting title abstracting to be able to ascertain whether properties are capable of being moved on or not, or being taxed or not. And I'm hoping this is a new day because we've recommitted on this board and this administration to doing that. So just to make that as a statement, that we haven't been doing a particularly good job. Ironically, you had the money, but you never were able to get as far as using it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Elaine. You run a great meeting. I just wanted to add that. All right, next up, Recreation Youth, and I do not believe they are here tonight. Joe, that 15% increase from 2021 is notable. Anywhere in parking, I mean, summer passes, they're anywhere from 13 to 42% ahead. The only confusion I had was parking violations, 29% decrease, but then there's a line item under the percent total increase that says parking enforcement officers also wrote 571 parking violations for $28,550. That's on top of the $20,300 listed in his report. So could you just get the board an answer on that?
Will do.
Thank you. And then I think hats off to Recreation for those numbers. Don, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to get my arms around what this really means, and my question is, is it possible to provide us with an FY '19 thought, too? Because COVID distorted a lot of things. We can go up 80% from the COVID baseline, but everybody was hunkered down in their basement hiding. So the amount of fees that we're getting, I'd like to see them based on some normal year.
Thank you. Do you want to have Eric back to discuss '19 through '21?
If he could update that with another column, I'd just, I'd just like to understand whether, is this really a 42% increase or an 18% increase, or is this, if you average it out over three years, is this like more like 4% or 5%?
Thank you. Joe, you have that. Mary, any questions?
No.
Julie?
I don't have any.
Larry?
No, I think you raised mine. I couldn't figure out the parking violations for us down in one area and up in another, so.
Okay. And I would note there's one vacancy, one current vacancy on that committee. Water, wastewater?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you proceed.
Go ahead.
So is the intent then to have the committee still come forward to present?
It sounds like Don just wanted that clarification, and if we get that, that sounds sufficient to me.
Will do.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Themistus, Chair of the Water Waste Committee.
Welcome.
Thank you. And Larry Ballantyne recommended I keep this short and eliminate the Greek presentation, so it's only going to be in English, and I'll just cover the high points.
I'll take care of it.
We're at full, the watership, Water Waste Committee is at full membership. We've been meeting virtually most of the pandemic, but since July, July of 2021, we've been meeting in person. I'll just cover some of the highlights because you have the report. The Harbor Masters Department's been very busy. During this year, 2021, they've had 42 maritime assistance cases, and I'm not going to describe them because they're in the report. Dredging and beach nourishment, the Barnstable County dredge cleared out the residue in Allen Harbor and Sacquet Tucket Harbor channels and removed about 24,000 cubic yards of sediment. All the dredge material was utilized for beach nourishment on public and private beaches and generated $129,000 worth of revenue for the town. Thanks to the Harbor Master, the town was awarded a 2021 Mass. Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development Grant. I'd never heard of this, totaling $36,000, which will be used next year for dredging of Allen Harbor. Revenue, Sacquet Tucket is really boom-die revenue. We generated 1.460, $1,464,000 for the fiscal year 2021 versus $103,000 less in the previous year. Projects, replaced the Round Cove Boat Ramp, done by Robert Auer. I'm gonna, you've got my comments here. I'm going to avoid, not repeat those. The membership of the committee is at full force. We, I'd just like to, you have a list of the members, or is that presented? Daniel Hall is our vice chairman, and he covered for me while I was away on a funeral the month of August. To my knowledge, all the members have been sworn in by the town, and as far as I can determine, one may not have completed the Conflict of Interest Law. I haven't been able to contact that person. We don't believe the committee needs any charge, our committee charge needs to be reviewed or updated. We do not need assistance and support in finding new members. We have a full membership staff. A record of attendees and the absences is maintained at each meeting, and it's included in our minutes. And our minutes are prepared, our agenda and our minutes are provided to the town on a monthly basis. After the previous month's meetings are approved, they're submitted to the town.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions, Larry?
No. Nice shout, Tom. That was very short.
Thank you.
Julie?
The committee does a great job.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you for your time and your report. It's very informative, and I also have to say hats off to John Rendon for getting another grant. So he's fantastic at filing for grants.
See, I neglected to mention something. John called me this afternoon. He usually attends the meetings, but he was up at 2:30 a.m., 2:00 a.m. this morning.
On a airplane?
On a rescue mission.
Yeah.
Oh, you're aware of it? Okay.
Yeah.
So he apologized for not being here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
No, just thank you, Tom. That was a great report.
Don?
Nothing further to add, but thanks, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, you're up.
Mr. Thompson was hoping to be here this evening, but he did call in sick, so if it's the board's pleasure to bring him back.
Yeah, well, that's a very important committee, especially with the, they're all important, but with the wastewater add, I think we would love to get him back. So we will reschedule Alan. Great. All right, on to B, which is committee vacancies. I said I would put it in the packet, and I did. Briefly, Agricultural Commission, we need three. Capital Outlay Committee, we need one, which is a Board of Selectmen appointee. Community Preservation Committee, which is also a Board of Selectmen appointee, we need one. Conservation Commission, one associate member. Council on Aging, one. Finance Committee, one. Forest Committee, three. Harwich Assessability Rights Committee, three. Harwich Cultural Council, two. Harwich Utility and Climate Committee, recently changed to the, with the addition of climate, we need three. Historic District Historic Commission, we need one full member and five associate members. Planning Board, we need two alternates. Wreck and Youth, we need one. Voter Information, we need one. Youth Services, we need two. And Zoning Board of Appeals, we need one alternate. If you want to apply for one of those committees, Richard, the application is in the office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My bandwidth has been far exceeded at this point. However, we do have an alternate member of the Council on Aging with one opening, Lieutenant Justin White of the Harwich Fire Department. We would love to have him, I don't know if he needs to go through the interview process. He's been an alternate to the, to the Council on Aging, has been attending our meetings. We would love to have him sworn as a member, and take one or more of those vacancies off your list.
I'll turn that question over to Don Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we tend to want to do, and this isn't to say that that exact thing wouldn't happen, but we tend to want to announce the vacancy so that the general public has the opportunity to submit an application, because yours isn't the only committee where there's somebody being recommended to do that, and interview them, and then make the selection, just out of fairness to the community. That's the process that the charter talks about, is advertising vacancies.
No disrespect, we have an alternate member ready to go, and if I could give him your personal cell phone, I'd be happy to, sir.
It's already written on many walls.
And Don and I did interview him in the beginning, and he was a great candidate for the alternate position. So just have him make an appointment to see the interview committee so that we can finalize that.
And, Mr. Chair, this will be put on the website, so that, I mean, all of this.
Right, Joe?
Yep.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
Just to inform that Moderator Michael Ford worked with staff two weeks ago to have a notice published last week in the Chronicle. He is, he has an ad there or a notice there where he's conducting interviews of any interested parties. I believe they have to apply by November 4th. That information is in the Chronicle, and there is a day set aside for that. So anyone specifically for Finance Committee, the moderator is dedicating time for that, that search as well.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just further on the list itself, we knew the hotspots, and we've been working diligently. We've gotten the Agricultural Commission now to the point where they've got enough members where they can meet a quorum requirement and actually start meeting. What I am unclear about, and deferring to the board, what they want to do about this, is the Forest Committee. I mean, that started out years ago with Link Thatcher, and, you know, Tim Miller was involved with it. I'm not sure what we want to do because after Link moved on as the tree warden, I mean, was collateral with this, we decided we wanted to do most of that in-house with the DPW. What's everybody's pleasure with that committee?
Julie?
Excuse me, I feel, I feel...
Déjà vu again?
No, I, I actually, yeah, I feel like we talked about this in like 2018 or something.
Nothing is ever done.
And I thought then that we talked about possibly ending it.
I'm bringing it up again.
I think we should look at that.
Joe, any comments on that one, or no?
No, I'm trying to stifle a cough.
Okay. I saw you looking, I saw you looking at me. Mary?
Yeah, I don't see much of a need for a Forest Committee.
Is it, is it a state-required committee? That's the question.
I'm just suggesting we might want to look into whether we want to continue doing that and what the requirements might be.
Can we look into that, Joe?
Absolutely.
So I think that that was, when we talked about this, Julie, years ago, it was a state-required committee, and therefore we didn't disband it, but...
But they haven't been knocking down the doors.
If it's not, let's put it on the agenda for disbandment next week.
Michael, before we move on.
Larry?
Let me, I'll make my plea again, but the Assessability Rights Committee.
Yeah.
That one is actually mandated by the state, and we haven't filled, and we don't have enough even for a quorum at this point. And we're not fulfilling our, our state obligations for that. And I would, I guess, plead here, but I would also like to use the example of Mr. Ford and advertise this and see if we can drum up some folks to it. I know, I keep pressing Emily on Council on Aging as one avenue, but we, we, we need to have that committee functioning, and it's not.
I agree. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more thing, just so the whole board hears this. Larry knows it. We've exhausted the backlog of people who have actually put in for various committees. We're, we're pretty current. The system with Ellen right now is, she gets an application, and then she emails Larry and I within days, saying, "When do you want to schedule an interview for this person?" After checking whether there's a real vacancy or not. That isn't the problem. The problem is that we need applicants right now. We've gone through the other process. We've cleared up the backlog, and as much as we've got people available, we've done something. So this is a real vacancy list for people to respond to.
Thank you. Mary, Elaine?
Just while we're on committees, a couple of meetings ago, maybe more than a couple, we talked about, and we had them in, the Community Center Committee, and I'm not sure where that went.
Larry had homework.
Oh, Larry had homework.
Yes, and I, I'll come back. I've met with all the committees, the three that I were, I came up that night, Council on Aging, the Cultural Center, and Brooks Library, and had some discussions. I'll, put me on the agenda. It'll be a short report, but I can, it was, it was positive discussions.
And also, we had a letter. I'm not sure if it's in this agenda, or if it was a letter after that from someone on Bike Ways.
Came today.
Okay, so is that, that's not for tonight?
And Bike Ways, and I did email Julie yesterday, Bike Ways, and asked to bring Bike Ways and Traffic back.
Okay, great.
For a vote of the board. I know that the new chair, who was the past chair, just not sworn in, and changed his position from what he had said in the interview and sent that letter, Fran, stating that they didn't, there wouldn't be a standalone. I still think, based on the two charges, we need to merge those committees, and I would ask that when Julie's done doing her homework, we bring it back for a board vote and end the conversation.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on committee vacancies? Kind of got a motion on C.
I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen public hearing minutes, February 10th, 2020.
Second. Moved in second in any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, Joe. D, y'all heard my venting to Richard Wastack, and in my opinion, we're not doing enough, and maybe our policies are wrong. The packet material tonight that was put in there was some of the state laws, not really the town of Harwich's policies. And I would ask for comments from the board, but I'm going to bring this back with a lot more information, and both of the tax collector and the assessor to present to us. Richard?
And looking at this, I didn't know it was on the agenda tonight, or I would have been better prepared for it, is that it's an opportunity for the Finance Director, the Tax Department, and the Board of Assessors, and the assessing department, to get together to work with staff to come back. I'm hearing you, loud and clear. I've been hearing you for a number of meetings on these issues. We've had discussions about it. And I think we need to get everyone aboard rather than each individual department working on it. We should be working together, liaisoning with administration to come up with a proposal. You know, we've got some policies in place. I'm sure the Tax Department does, the Finance Director has. Working together, we can try to accomplish what you're looking for, Mr. Chairman. So I would just recommend that you put those departments together as a work group to come back with something.
Thank you. Joe, I would put that on for the first or second meeting in December. But on Wednesday, since we're not meeting tomorrow, I'd like to go over the deep dive that Richard just mentioned and who should be invited to that meeting, but certainly who, who, who he just suggested, but with a lot more information than, than we got. This came from my ask through the Tax Office on why that property out in East Harbor was not taxed until the transfer happened, and that was related to the email that you had responded to Mr. Wise. So that's kind of where this all began. So thank you. Questions and comments from the board, Don?
No.
Mary?
No, other than I'm with you. Anywhere we can go after money.
Julie?
No, none. I agree.
Larry?
I know we have a lot of questions, but one item that continually confuses me is how many years can we go back to collect taxes when we find an owner's unknown? Because sometimes it seems we can only go back a couple of years, I'm told, and other times we can go back forever. So I'm not clear.
If you don't mind, Richard, and if that's related to the ones that aren't really being taxed.
You have to answer it tonight, but the question I've had, still don't understand.
There are a number of requirements at the state. We work under the guise of the Department of Revenue and work with certain requirements from them. But again, you've got some experts in-house here, one of which is out, some health issues at the moment, and I will not speak for the department. You know, that is their responsibility.
There's a question when you come back.
But listen, I think that's, getting all of that together with a work group, and I think it's been pretty clear, your board has been very clear in what the interest is in moving forward, to capture some of that revenue that we have not been. And if we're not able to capture the revenue, can we capture the deed to the parcels? And I think we're all on the same page in that, but some of those questions need to be answered by staff.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. I would ask the board, any specific... I would ask the board, any specific questions you have? Could you put it in an email to me so that I can make it part of a packet to the Board of Assessors, the assessor, and the tax collector? Please? All right. Discussion and possible vote on the 2020 reprecincting plan for the town of Harwich. Joe, do you want to touch on this, since you've been involved with three, as you mentioned before the meeting tonight?
Well, this, this would be my third.
Okay.
Speaking as a former town clerk, and I know our, our town clerk has a similar experience. What you see in the packet and presented to you on the easel tonight is a proposed map that was provided by the Secretary of the Commonwealth, as we refer to him, the other Bill Galvin. And this happens every 10 years, and it follows the federal census. So the Board of Selectmen and towns with our form of government are required to take the vote, as the clerk has provided in the memo tonight, to accept the boundary lines that are depicted on the map, but also what you have in your packet, that additional documentation are known as the legal boundaries, and those are, I believe, were also provided by the Secretary of State's office. Very quickly, you'll see on the map that they, the Secretary's office has certified that the town's official population, based on the federal census data from 2020, is 13,440 people. And that's significant because a precinct, a political precinct in a town cannot have more than 4,000 inhabitants. And that's a specific word under the statute, because it's not simply voters, they're contemplating, if you will, eight-year-olds, who in the span of 10 years would become 18, and still within that precinct boundary. And so that's why the 4,000-person threshold is there. And what you'll see is that number of 13,440 gives you an even number of 3,360. So that's what they're shooting for. And then in the chart, you'll see that there's a minimum and a maximum to that, so that there's a standard deviation where they're not exceeding. So the map you have this evening is represented by the Commonwealth to be a well-balanced map that require, that still has the town separated into four precincts, more than ample to cover the population, because that would cover any closer to 16,000. And so really, what the board is doing tonight, then, is affirming the map and the legal boundaries provided by the secretary.
Thank you, Joe. Questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might make note that this isn't any more optional than early voting, or mail voting, or anything else that comes from the state. This is what they determined based on the census. So it's not so much that we can debate back with them about where we want Precinct Four to be versus Precinct Three.
So I'm going to get a motion from you?
Yeah, I move that we accept the reprecincting and sign the memo.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Uh, D, no, F. Discussion and possible vote to waive transfer station fees for yard waste associated with the Nor'easter on 10/27/21. It's not in the packet tonight, but we do have a waiver, what is it called? Storm damage brush waiver, fee waiver policy. Number one, the storm magnitude must be so significant that it has been declared an emergency by either the President, the Governor, or by the Harwich Board of Selectmen. This was a request that I put this on. Obviously, the storm was five days ago, or more, a week ago. We took in a fairly insignificant amount of brush. There is a cost of that brush, to deal with that brush, and based on the staff at the dump, who I called today, there was not a lot of requests for free brush removal. So if we approve this tonight, somebody should, if they make the motion, should make a motion that includes how we're going to get money back to those who have already paid. If we think that this is an old policy that should be revisited, to add an emergency meeting by the Board of Selectmen the day of the storm to make that decision. But the DPW director did not think that this, the amount of brush that we took in was an emergency, and that we need to waive the fees. But I thought it was more important for the board to make this decision than me or Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think that your latter comment is probably appropriate, this, we get weather here, I mean, it happens often. So it's kind of, we're hamstrung if we wait a week or so, because there are people that have to act and have to act right away. We probably want to revisit the policy to have an emergency meeting. We used to do that 20 years ago, but got away from it again.
Mary?
I wanted you to clarify that last bit that you said. And now that Don's spoken, I don't remember what it was.
That the storm wasn't significant enough?
That Link Hooper feels that the storm was not significant, and what he saw for brush coming in was not significant. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know. I could go either way, but I think it would be a good thing to change the policy, so we could do a conference call or something.
Julie?
No, I would agree. I mean, it's probably more relevant when it happens. I mean, and to your point, how do you go back?
Yeah.
You know, so...
Larry?
Yeah, it's still late for this time. We could look ahead, but I know I was, I made several trips on the day after, and so, and it was a long line of people, so my guess is, those that are picking up brush have already picked up brush.
The tornado cost the town 126,000 to grind that, to grind that brush. You know, Link added today that anyone that's bringing a significant amount of weight into the dump, you know, dump truck loads of logs and anything with a lot of weight, they don't go to the Harwich dump, they go to one of the private collectors, because it's 25 or 35 dollars for a load. Harwich does it by weight. And he also, it came up that Yarmouth, Dennis, and Chatham waived their fees for, for brush. In at least two instances, somebody came to the Harwich dump and turned around and left with their brush to go to one of those dumps, but then came back with their brush, because those dumps don't let you in if you're a non-resident. So we, you know, Link's comment today that, that stuck with me is, we're, we're in business to take debris in, in the Harwich dump. You come in through the gate, you, you get to the scale, or you drive through with your trash. It doesn't distinguish whether you're a resident or not when you get on that scale to weigh in. You're paying by a fee set by the Board of Selectmen. So he said, when we waive this fee, everybody comes to the Harwich dump. It doesn't matter what town they come from, it doesn't matter if they're a commercial hauler hauling for residents and charging residents, everybody is coming to the Harwich dump. So there would be a significant cost to the town in waiving this fee for every storm. So I would ask that the town administrator have a conversation with the DPW director on a potential change in the policy to add a layer for emergency meetings, I think is what I'm hearing from the board, so that we're not waiting a week. Joe?
Sure, and if I could speak to that specifically, because you'll hear about it, hopefully momentarily under TA report. But the, the Nor'easter necessitated the MAC being brought online, which is the Multi-Agency Coordination Center, really the, the emergency operations for Cape Cod. And so we had meetings beginning Tuesday evening, straight through the weekend. And so I, as administrator, Megan Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator, Chief LeBlanc, Chief Gilmet, the deputy chiefs, participated in almost all of those calls, if not, well, Harwich was represented on every call for the duration of the storm. Very early on, the MAC had announced through the MEMA representative that the governor was not looking at this to be a state of emergency. And so that's significant, because early on in those calls, we usually hear whether we think it's going to be to that level, and then we would all report out. So you would have heard from our Public Safety Chiefs, if there was a need for an emergency meeting to declare a local emergency. And you folks, or your predecessor board, did exactly that back in tornado during that, when it became clear that Harwich was one of the hardest-hit communities. And that was also the last time, I believe, that we used this policy because of the extent of the damage. And so I would, I can certainly meet and will meet with the DPW director going forward, but I would offer that the policy, as you've stated it, as you see it there, did work. There was never a contemplated declaration for the governor, there was no recommendation for any municipalities, for any purpose, to declare emergencies. And so the other part that I would put out there is, I think the DPW director would also attest to the fact that a lot of the debris that the town was dealing with was on town roadways. And so between Eversource Cruise, Verizon Cruise, Comcast, and DPW, they were actively moving debris from roadways and bringing it to the DPW. And so that was the extent of a lot of the debris. We also wanted to put out notices, please don't add your debris to ours, because it's a safety hazard. So I think the town is well-covered in this instance, where there was no contemplation of a declaration, and I think the board is wise to, to not enforce this policy at this point.
Thank you, Joe. Larry?
Just briefly, I'm told from the, by the fire chief, that Verizon especially was, worked very cooperative with the town. They had a liaison at the Public Safety Building, and they were with them every step of the way, and coordinating with fire, DPW, and hats off to, we fight sometimes with Verizon when we, poles and the other items, but in this emergency, they were there from, from the beginning through, throughout.
Was it Verizon, or was it Eversource?
Eversource, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I didn't want to be the one to correct the record.
Eversource.
We do have a...
Verizon owns the poles, though.
Yep.
A lot of them.
Utility poles, or telephone poles.
Yeah, some of them, Verizon on some.
Mary?
One clarification, Joe. Do you think we do need a policy that we can have an emergency meeting, or are you saying that that already exists?
I believe it already exists. Knowing how we and staff respond to emergencies, how we're immediately tied into communication at both the county and the state level, were we to hear anything, my next step would be to reach out to the chair to recommend an emergency meeting. We could take precautions to do it safely and remotely, and so I don't see a reason at this point to change. I believe your policy as written in 2008 has worked throughout this Nor'easter.
Thank you.
Contracts. Get motions on that as soon as Mary catches her breath?
Yep. I move that we vote to approve a contract with Eastern Minerals, Inc., in the amount of 138,000 for snow and ice public work supplies.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
I move that we vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign the RJV Construction Corporation request for change order number four, for Sewerage Work Improvements Phase Two, Contract Two. This change order results in a net decrease to the contact, contract price of 564,559.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I never turn down money.
Okay.
It's coming back.
Five zero, Joe. Thank you.
I move that we vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Robert B. Our Company's request for change order number six, for Sewerage Works Improvement Phase Two, Contract One. This change order results in a net decrease to the contract of 1,5810.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe? Town administrators' report?
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I'm talking to our water, wastewater superintendent by my own version of sign language. Dan, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you, could you just speak to the net effect of these two change orders that the board is executing?
Yes, so the two change orders for the sewer projects were related to money that was ultimately unspent. So when the project was put out to bid, there was a line item that all the work was billed against, and now that the work is just about complete, lines that had money remaining are now, through this balancing, change order returned to the town.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Town administrators' report?
Thank you. And the town administrators' report, first, there's a contract I'd make you aware of that I executed, and this is for MC Govern Municipal HQ and the town, and it's, despite the name, I thought it was a website when I first read it, it's actually a, a firm that sells transit cargo vans. So in accordance with the, let me just find my note here, I believe it was 2021 vote, excuse me, 2020 vote of town meeting, we have purchased a 2022 Ford Transit Cargo Van for the Department of Public Works, and I'm thrilled to announce that for several reasons. First, it shows that we're, we're keeping up with procurement, we're dispatching them as quickly as we can. Total contract for this cargo van, as expected, was 45,288.75. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we've spoken of the now, what we will now know as the October 21 Nor'easter. You heard me say how town staff was engaged as early as Tuesday evening, and I wish I could go back to that call, because we, when we discussed it initially, we thought that, you know, the storm could, could impact us, but we didn't expect it to be anything that it, that it rose to the magnitude of, and certainly the winds and the rains were devastating. But I would be remiss if I didn't draw attention to, as I said before, Public Safety, certainly Police and Fire. My first call came in Wednesday morning about 5:30, when the fire chief called me and said that the storm is bigger than we expected, and we needed to start mobilizing. That's when I found out that our own deputy chief, Considine, and Kyle Edson had been out since, I think, 2 o'clock in the morning, charging up the, the batteries, the generator batteries for the streetlights off of the sign message boards that we have. And so, you know, that, that was in the teeth of the storm when the power was starting to go out. And, and that effort continued by so many people, certainly Public Safety, Police and Fire, Public Works. I'm, I'm always impressed, I don't know how they do it and how they get the stamina, because they were out there from the earliest, darkest moments, literally darkest moments. And, you know, we just kept getting constant reports. And as, as Selectmen Valentine referred to, Eversource, and again, in my opinion, has demonstrated themselves to be a really good, strong partner when it comes to these issues. Unfortunately, we're getting a lot of experience working together, you know, between the tornado snowstorms and now the Nor'easter. We were fortunate that we had Kevin J. Murphy, who was our representative from Eversource. I didn't have the chance to meet him, Chief LeBlanc told me that Mr. Murphy and I could have done our best Boston accents, talking about the Red Sox. You know, Dave said, I think I would have been well-represented, but Murph, as I probably would have called him, did a great job. He, he embedded himself with Public Safety, I'm going to say, probably midday by Wednesday, as they did throughout the Cape. But what was helpful for us is Chief Gilmet, Chief LeBlanc, and Kevin Murphy were able to discuss where, what would the priorities were for restoration of power. And so they had determined early on that the first priorities were Rosewood and Regal because of assisted living. Both of those properties were without power. They were operating on generators, but not knowing how long it was going to go on. Those were priorities, and they added Public Safety, because Public Safety was down, and we needed them to be operational. And so despite them being our priorities, you know, it, it's whatever the wires are going to allow, and, you know, it took some time, but I think it would have been far more difficult if we didn't have the Eversource representative embedded. And I have a very nice email from Mr. Murphy, where he extols the virtue and professionalism of our chiefs directly, and Public Safety by extension, and I think it's appropriate that we return the favor and thank Mr. Murphy for his efforts as well. And I did convey that to him earlier today, but, you know, these storms happen, are going to continue to happen. I still think it's, I consider it too early in the season, but here we are. But everyone acquitted themselves very well and just did phenomenal work. So for Public Safety, Police, Fire, Public Works, department heads, everybody that pitched in, tremendous job. And we went from 77% of the town without power early Wednesday morning, to, if I remember my numbers correctly, I think we were down to 10% Friday morning, and full, full restoration, which is considered less than 1% by Friday night, which is remarkable, given how widespread the storm was. So thank you for letting me go on about that, but I think it was important to recognize the great efforts of so many people.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Selectmen's report, Don?
Nothing except to say that Joe's right, it was a heck of a week.
Mary?
All set, thanks, Mike.
Julie?
No, just thank you to everybody who worked so hard.
Larry?
Second's added, nothing more to add.
I would just add... I would just add the, the dump, wow. It was amazing to watch how many people go to our dump when I was taking my brush to the dump. But we were backed out onto, it was like treasure chest days, everyone was out on Queen Anne Road. But both lines going into the dump, but they bring in an awful lot of trash and debris into that dump. I don't know how they turn it around so quick. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.